Good evening. At this time, I will entertain a motion to return to our regular order of business.
I so move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Could we rise for a moment of silence? Since our last meeting, we have lost three members of the Dyton family. Erin Ferry, 33, of Dyton, passed away the evening of May 7th. Erin is survived by her parents, Highway Superintendent Thomas Ferry and Animal Control Officer Stacy Ferry. Erin was a graduate of Dyton Hobbit Regional High School. She was an election worker in Dyton and served as Dyton's GATRA representative. She was also active in the Lions Club as well as the Lincoln Village community. Also passing, Michael Rose passed away unexpectedly on Sunday, May 1st. The son of the late Clinton Adele Rose, he was a lifelong resident of Dyton, where he was involved in the family business, the Dyton Red and White on Main Street. Michael is survived by his wife Nancy Rose. Alan Thurston, age 77, passed away on May 3rd, 2022. He worked as a manager at Napa Taunton Auto for over 50 years. He is the father-in-law of Dyton's administrative assistant Karen Brady. At this time, I ask a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. Next order is public input. And anyone who wishes to speak at this time, please state your name and your address. We also ask that if it is a matter in which you have a complaint about any employee or appointed official, that you address those concerns with Town Administrator Mullen rather than through public input. We also ask that department heads or commission committee leadership, if they have business that they wish to discuss, that it be done through the agenda process, asking to be placed on the agenda. At this time, anyone present have anything for the greater good? Anyone on Zoom wish to speak at this time in the public input session? Mr. Karen? Since there's no further comment, new business. Review, discuss, enact, recommendation to appointment to Highway Department Labor Class 1. Mr. Mullen, do you have anything?
Yes, we have the Highway Superintendent tonight. We have a recommendation to hired, we have a recommendation to hire Jeff Pimentel from Dyton. Jeff is actually here with us. Jeff is actually here with us. We had two interview processes to fill this position. And we're very, very happy to be have, to have the potential of Jeff joining us with your approval this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. After reviewing applications on hand with the town administrator, Mr. Ferry would like to recommend Jeff Pimentel from Dyton as our operator class, to fill our operator Class 1 vacancy. Ms. Pacheco?
Is it Pimentel or Pimentel?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a non, yeah, a non-Portuguese person. I'll make a motion that Jeffrey Pimentel be appointed as operator Class 1, as who has an operator one class license to the Highway Department.
Mr. Karen? Hello?
Second, Karen.
Motion's been made in second.
Hello, second.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Hello? Chairman Hull is an aye. Mr. Pimentel, congratulations and thank you. Welcome aboard. Our next item on the agenda, recommendation to appoint Daniel Higgins to the Open Space Committee.
Included in the packet, Mr. Chairman, we have a recommendation from the chairman of the Open Space Committee, Kevin Smith, that the Open Space met and they are recommending Mr. Daniel Higgins' full appointment to the committee.
At the Open Space Committee meeting Monday evening, we voted unanimously to accept the volunteer application from Dan Higgins. We'd like to recommend the board of selectmen appoint him to this committee. At this time, I would entertain a motion to accept Daniel Higgins.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Daniel Higgins to the Open Space Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. I want to welcome Mr. Higgins to the board and congratulations. I'm in order. Also serves on the Dyton Industrial Development Commission as chairman, and he's been an excellent addition to this town. Thank you. Next item, to appoint Kent Pacheco as liaison, selectman Kent Pacheco as liaison to the Dyton Trails Committee. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make that motion to appoint Kent to the Dyton Trails Committee.
Mr. Hull will step down as chairman to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Ms. Pacheco?
Aye. Long as it's not a conflict.
Congratulations, thank you. Recommendation to appoint Tom Ferry to the Joint Transportation Planning Group. Mr. Mullen, could you explain a little bit about this group?
Yes.
This is one that seldom comes before us and...
So, yes, the Joint Transportation Planning Group, or the JTPG, is the regional planning group like for transportation infrastructure priorities. That is housed on the SERPED. So, SERPED each year, they seek representatives from each of their 27-member communities like in the position of, in the permission, yeah, for the position of a permanent and an alternate member. And what the JTPG does is it helps to create, you know, like a regional transportation funding plan. So specifically, any improvements to Route 44 or to 138 that we have an interest in here, that we have an interest in here in town, that also have an impact regionally. Those are the different types of projects that typically go before the JTPG. So this is the annual appointment. For the last few years, the Highway Superintendent has been the town's appointee to the JTPG. And since last year, shortly after I was hired as a town administrator, I became the alternate member.
At this time, I'll accept a motion to appoint Tom Ferry to the Joint Transportation Planning Group.
So move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Ms. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Mullen? I'm sorry, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, enact on the recommendation to appoint Mike Mullen to the Joint Transportation Planning Group. Ms. Pacheco?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Town Administrator Mike Mullen Jr. to the Joint Transportation Planning Group as an alternate member.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Ms. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, enact on the recommendation to appoint Elise Vincent to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I have a letter to Mike Mullen dated April 28th. Please be advised that on April 27th, 2022, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted unanimously to recommend the appointment of Elise Vincent, 2709 Wellington Street, North Dyton, as a member of the Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept Ms. Vincent as a member of the ZBA.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Elise Vincent to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hull is an aye. Congratulations, Ms. Vincent, and welcome aboard. Review, discuss, enact on the recommendation to appoint Annabella Powell as a GATRA Advisory Board member.
Yes, so the recommendation before you this evening, Mr. Chairman, is to appoint Bella as Dyton's, as Dyton's representative to the GATRA Advisory Board. The position up until January had been filled by the prior executive director of the Council on Aging. And looking at the membership of the GATRA Advisory Board, like the representatives are typically the Council on Aging Directors or the, like all the human services coordinators, like from the towns, from the towns and the cities that make up GATRA's Advisory Board. So I'm confident Bella will represent the town in Dyton's interests very well on that advisory board, so I'm happy to recommend her to the board for approval.
Thank you. And Ms. Powell is with us this evening. Do you feel comfortable in this position?
I am.
At this, thank you. At this time, I will accept a motion to appoint Annabella Powell to the GATRA Advisory Board.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Annabella, also known as Bella Powell, as a GATRA Advisory Board member.
Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Ms. Powell, congratulations. Welcome aboard. Review, discuss, enact Bristol County Agricultural High School one-day liquor license request. Mr. Mullen, do you have a recommendation on this motion?
Yes, this is just a one-day liquor license request that came forth from Bristol County Agricultural High School. The high school itself has an advisory board that is separate from the county advisory board. And they're having their annual meeting on May 25th from 5:00 to 9:00. All the paperwork is in order. The checklist is in order, and the liability insurance is in order as well. So I do recommend approval.
I would like to add that this is an annual event, and approval has been something that has happened annually. At this time, I'll accept a motion for the one-day liquor license request from Bristol County Agricultural School.
I'll make a motion that we approve a one-day liquor license for Bristol County Agricultural High School for May 25th, 2022.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Kent Pacheco is an aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, enact on a request to waive permit fees for Northern Drill Services, 130 East Main Street, North Borough, Mass. Mr. Mullen, do you have a recommendation on?
Yeah, yes, yes, like I do recommend the waiving of the permit fees. Northern Drill Services is actually a subcontractor of the Beta Group, who's our consultant on the Pleasant Street Bridge project. So the soil, the soil, the soil borings that are actually being performed are like are actually part of our Pleasant Street Bridge engineering design work. So this actually relates to a town project. Like in the future, I would recommend that we have an overarching conversation about waiving all fees relative to a town-associated project. But in the meantime, in the short, you know, in the short term, I do recommend that it is in order for the fees for Northern Drill Services to be waived.
Thank you. Sorry if I put Mr. Agar on the spot, but in lieu of Mr. Ferry's bereavement, I would ask, since you are in charge of projects, your recommendation.
This permit fee is actually a permit fee in my department, so it is appropriate. So with that said, I concur with Administrator Mullen. I'm in agreement that the fee we waive for this project.
Thank you very much. I will, at this time, accept a motion to waive the permit fee for Northern Drill Services, 130 East Main Street, North Borough, Mass.
So move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. I would ask, you'll notice a little bit of a delay in Mr. Karen's response. Just so everyone knows, Mr. Karen is in Italy, so it takes a while for the transmission to get there and back. Review, discuss, enact Award of Demolition Bid, Hilltown Demolition, 294 West Shaft Road, North Adams, Mass.
So, yes, Mr. Chairman, obviously we're joined by the building commissioner as well. But we did, so these, so these are for two properties. One on Main Street, the other one on Tremont Street, that have been deemed unsafe by the building commissioner. We put the demolition for the properties out to bid. We actually received very, very competitive bids. And actually, according to the building commissioner, the most bids we received for a project like this in quite some time, which is good. It helps, you know, it helps really keep our costs down. And we have a very competitive, we had a very competitive bid for both projects in the amount of $30,900 for Hilltown Demolition of North Adams. So they're going to be driving a raise here to Dyton. But we checked their references as well. Their references were really good. They recently did a project in Bridgewater that was very favorably reported on. And we have all the required contractual documentation as of now. So we're recommending, we're recommending approval.
Mr. Agar, is there anything you wish to add in regards to that project?
No, sir.
I do have a question regarding these demolitions. Will they be completed before the end of this calendar year?
Yes, they will be. I believe we kept the contract on a 45-day schedule, so they will be taken down fairly quickly.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the contract is for May 11th today to June 30th, 2022.
Right, yep.
Thank you. I will, at this time, entertain a motion to award demolition bid to Hilltown Demolition, 294 West Shaft Road, North Adams, Mass, for the sum of $30,900.
That would just have to be completed by June 30th, 2022. So move.
To be completed by June 30th, 2022. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye, Kent Pacheco.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, enact 61A, I'm sorry, 61-8, Write a First Refusal, 624 Middle Street.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this right of first refusal is coming back to us relative to the right of first refusal for the solar project at the Racine property. And as you know, in the packet, we do have all the recommendations from the assessors, from the planning board, and like in the current column, that they do recommend the board of selectmen waive the right of first refusal.
Thank you. Mrs. Blat, forgive me for putting you on the spot, but as a member of the assessors, did you have any concerns regarding this project before we vote?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, no, because this project started quite a while ago. When through the whole process, it has pilot agreement, as does the Cabral property. And somewhere along the way it was discovered, the first step taken out of Chapter 61A was never done. So I am glad that we can now move ahead. And the Starwater Committee did give them an extension on the time to start working on it. So both the Starwater Committee and the Board of Assessors are very happy.
Thank you very much. Thank you. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to...
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to waive the first right of refusal for the property at 624 Middle Street, map 8, lot 31.
Do I have a second, Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. SERPED Agreement for Economic Development Plan.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. So like as the board and the public may know, we received a grant from the state, a state grant in the amount of $25,000 the end of last calendar year to help fund an economic development plan with the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. And the state grant of $25,000 has been matched with an approximately $45,000 grant from SERPED's district local technical assistance program, the DLTA program. And not only, not only, like not only has SERPED agreed to help fund the economic development plan, they've also agreed to be our consultant for the project, which, as you know, we have a very good relationship and, you know, like a prior working relationship and ongoing working relationship with SERPED. So the contract before the boards, the contract before the board just lays out the expectations for the economic development plan, the timelines, which will include community events and community forums. So we do try to involve all of Dyton in the plan. I can get, I can get, I can get everyone's feedback, you know, I have everyone's input. So the economic development plan that we work in there, and that the Development and Industrial Commission will work to create with SERPED over the next year and a half, will actually be, will be informed by the wants and the desires in the priorities of all of Dyton. So this whole plan, like in this whole initiative is really, you know, like is really aimed at being a community-led initiative. So the priorities that are reflected in the plan are, you know, like a really community-driven. So to that end, I do recommend the proposed contract between the town of Dyton and SERPED.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with SERPED for economic development plan.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Ms. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull, also an aye. Motion passes. On the next item, because Mr. Karen is on Zoom, I would ask, Mr. Pacheco, I need to excuse myself from this discussion and the vote in regards to this special municipal employee of financial interest agreement with Nicole Mello.
So the next agenda item is disclosure by special municipal employee of financial interest in municipal position, Nicole Mello. She's provided us with the information that is necessary, that is necessary to be considered a municipal employee and to make sure that there's no conflict, which doesn't appear to me to be any conflict. Do we have to make a motion to?
Yes, I, yes, I, the selectman, like it is recommended and required by the State Ethics Commission that the disclosure be approved. And at the board's last meeting, she, and the public health nurse was, the public health nurse was designated as, designated as, designated as a special municipal employee. We have since had a long discussion with the ethics, we have since had a long discussion with ethics. Oh, you know, they have agreed everything is in line and there's no issues as long as this is approved.
I'll make a motion that we approve the disclosure by special municipal employee of financial interest in municipal position for Nicole Mello. There a second?
Second.
Is there any, is there any discussion? If not, I'm going to...
This is an agreed asset, but I'm glad we're doing it.
Thank you. I'll call for a vote, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Kent Pacheco is an aye, and I assume that Mr. Hull's going to abstain.
Abstain, that is correct.
So it passes.
Thank you. The next item, review, discuss, enact, Memorandum of Agreement of the Clerical Union. Mr. Mullen?
Yes, before you this evening is a MOU that the board approved in executive session. There was a grievance on a matter which came to my office, which came to my office at step two a few weeks ago. And working with the union and the department, working with the union and the department, we did come to a resolution that is now before you for ratification.
Mr. Mullen, I want to thank you for great mediation skills that you exhibited in making this agreement come together.
Thank you.
One of the jobs as a town administrator is mediating conflicts. I know it's not an easy job, but you do it well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I will entertain a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement for clerical union.
I so move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made, motion made in second. Ms. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, enact on the memorandum of agreement with the highway union.
I'm going to make a motion that we table this.
Do I have a second to table this?
Second.
All those in favor? Ms. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Memorandum of Agreement, Clerical Union and Dispatchers' Union?
Yes, this is another, this is another MOU, this is another MOU, Mr. Chairman, that came before the board in executive session, and it was approved, they were approved. Like in these, in these MOU, similar, are similar to various... MOUs, similar to various contracts that have now been enshrined with Juneteenth as a holiday. These MOUs would establish, would establish Juneteenth as a holiday in the clerical union and in the Dayton Dispatches' Union. And I recommend ratification of them as well.
Also, it should be noted that June nineteenth is a federal holiday as well. Any further discussion?
I believe it's a state holiday, too.
Yes, it is. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion that we approve and ratify the memorandum of agreement as explained to us with the clerical union and dispatchers' union.
Mr. Karen, motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, annual town meeting warrant update and recommendations.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we wanted to provide, we wanted to provide a draft of the warrant that at this point the end of last week, that at this point the end of last week was sent to council, and we will have their feedback in comments by no later than Monday. You will see in Article Four that the budget recommendations there, there are placeholders for them, and that we are waiting, that we are waiting the recommendations of the FINCOM, and those will be finalized, those will be finalized next Thursday evening, so that is the evening of the nineteenth. And that will bring everything in line for the warrant, based on the recommendations of the board and the FINCOM, that will be in line for the warrant to be sent to the print house by May twenty-third, and then be able to be sent out to all, to Dayton residents thereafter. But at this point, we have a proposed warrant, shorter recommendations, that as of right now includes a total of forty-one articles. We have articles, I believe, one through thirteen, I believe, are the typical house, the typical house keeping articles that we have, and we ask to be approved, so we can carry out the business of the town. Like in fiscal year 2023, we have four articles relative to CPC, we have funding articles for capital projects, which we're waiting the recommendation of the FINCOM and the board on, and then the end, the last ten or so articles, those are zoning bylaw and general bylaw articles that are being presented to the board. We have, as you know, Mr. Chairman, we've talked about having, we've talked about having a town meeting information session to be scheduled on Wednesday, June first, so we have the ability, so we have the ability to review with the town residents, and anyone, like anyone who has any questions about any of the articles, to have the opportunity to review those prior to town meeting on Wednesday, June first, at this point.
What time would that be?
Presumably that will be, presumably that will be at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yes. Like if that works for everybody else.
Now, in regards to the vote for this evening, it is just to forward it to the attorney for his review?
So that has already been done, the board, so the board at the last meeting voted to place all the then-proposed articles on the warrant. So we do, based on that vote, we did send the draft of this warrant to town council at the end of last week, but we haven't actually provided the public yet with a draft of where we are and what the articles are at this point.
Now, this will be posted where for the public's perusal?
Once it's actually approved on the, by next Thursday evening, and sent out on the twenty-third, it will be posted, I'm sorry, posted as directed, and I believe Nancy could probably explain more than I could, but I believe at town hall, I believe at the North Dayton Fire Department, we post it there, the post office...
Main Street Fire Station.
The Main Street Fire Station.
You're talking about the main warrant?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And it also will be on the website?
Oh, yes, absolutely on the website, yes.
So at this point, you will entertain a motion to accept this warrant, or is it mostly a discussion item?
So, so, yeah, like it's really a discussion item until the board makes its recommendations.
And we'll be doing that next week?
Yes. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Mr. Owen, you mentioned the nineteenth of the FINCOM?
Yes.
Seven p.m. is concomit that night, and when I talked to Mr. Roach...
Yes.
He told me it was the seventeenth he had to wrap up.
Yes, so he reached out to me this morning with a pretty significant conflict. So even though, I want to be honest with you, we haven't had time to check the availability of here as of yet, so that presumably means that the, yes, so... So that would, so depending the availability at prime time, presumably that meeting will be at prime time. So, but again, we're trying to, oh, yeah, deal with all the logistics as on a evolving basis, so thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Gulat.
Thank you. Proposed Board of Selectmen meeting schedule for July twenty-two to December twenty-two. Mr. Karen, have you had the opportunity to review the schedule of meetings and important dates?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Pacheco, have you?
Yes, I have.
Do either of you have any conflicts with those dates that you know of at this time?
No.
Then, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to accept the meeting dates as proposed from July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, to December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed Board of Selectmen's meeting schedule of July twenty-twenty-two to December twenty-two, with the possibility of amending or changing those based on future conflicts that we may have.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second? Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Ken Pacheco was an aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda is scheduled appointments?
Good luck.
Thank you. And recognition. First individual is someone that I am certain...
So should we wait for Mr. Pires to come? I believe he was trying to be here for around seven o'clock.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
I would suggest that we hold off on that.
Could I ask that we have a motion to table this until Mr. Pires is present?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, Ken Pacheco.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Is Mr. Hague here?
Sir, he's on his way. I'll call him, and he'll be here probably five or ten minutes.
I will entertain a motion to table this item.
So move.
Oh, Mr. Hague is just walking in.
I withdraw my motion.
Perfect.
Your timing was perfect, Mr. Hague.
I don't make an answer.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have the annual Memorial Day activity for May twenty-eighth, I believe, May thirtieth.
Monday, May thirtieth.
May thirtieth.
Ceremony will be here.
To your presentation this evening and also Memorial Day activities.
So what the plan is, to assemble here at the pavilion and go up to the Veterans Park and have a speaking program, wreath dedication, raising the flag. Program is still in the works as far as speakers, and any input that you would like to give us, that's our initial flyer.
Thank you. We have traditionally had presentations from Mr. Menjies, Mrs. Gulat, and Colonel Perry.
All three have been confirmed to participate on that day.
Excellent.
Plus a few other things, as we can have different, expand it a little bit, so...
And if you could review the time and locations for the different segments of the presentation? I appreciate it.
It would be assembly, ten o'clock here at the pavilion, and we'll proceed with our flags, and whoever's here, join us at the Veterans Park. We'll have a, we'll be raising the flag, because at that point it will be at half-staff, and we'll be putting it up for the day, for the rest of the day. And wreath ceremony and the speaking program, we're hoping to have taps if we get that done, and similar to what you've done in the past.
Will the Boy Scouts in town be attending?
I don't have any connection or anything with the Boy Scouts at this particular point. I have reached out to Pastor Jack and his youth group that showed some interest in participating in veterans' activities, so I've got to call into him, I'm waiting back. Maybe some of the younger folk in town will show up, because Memorial Day is about not only remembering, it's about teaching other generations to remember, so we can continue.
I'm confident that Mr. Pacheco and I can help you in reaching out to the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts.
Okay, if you can do that, they would be welcome.
You said "we," so just, you pointed at me, but I just want to make sure it's "we."
Yeah.
It is, yes.
I know, you volunteered.
Yeah.
One of the leaders of the Boy Scouts, who's done an incredible job with the garden next door, is also on a subcommittee with Agricultural Committee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could fill that piece in, it would be great, because we do need somewhat of a color guard to assemble, and I believe they could, you know, participate with the flags. Color guards are hard to come by these days with budget constraints and different departments, so that'd be great if they volunteered.
I'll reach out to her.
And I'll reach out to Jen Dzczkowski.
Yeah, if you could, you know, send me an email...
Jenna Bar, right?
Excuse me?
Jenna Bar, you're talking about Jenna Bar?
Montero.
Yeah, Jen Montero.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and send me an email so I can list them properly on our program that we'll have.
I'll let you know.
Any other suggestions are welcome, and I know it's customary after, when we come back and retire to the pavilion, is coffee and donuts, I think. That seems to be what I've seen in the past.
It's been done in the past.
Yeah, there's one other thing that might happen, is a program called Three Fifty-One from the governor's office, which gives us an ambassador from one of the local schools, and they carry the proclamation from the governor, and they come to the ceremony, and I guess they read the proclamation. If it arrives here prior to the day, I believe someone from the select board enters that into the record. I remember you doing Veterans Day.
Yes, it would be the chairman, we have, you know, we have a new chairman now, so I would ask that the chairman, if we do get that proclamation, that you have an opportunity to read that and let the public...
Yeah, so if it shows up here, and then I would ask you to speak at that program and represent the town, and of course, all the other selectmen are invited, and I notice you all usually participate, so that's good.
Yeah.
I'm planning on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And I'll let you know what the story is with the Boy Scouts.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Pacheco, announcements?
Yes, the announcements, list of vacancies for boards, committees, and commissions. Cable television committee needs one person, cemetery commission needs one person, commission on disability needs three people, community preservation committee needs one, conservation commission needs one, finance committee needs two, is that, do they need two?
To FINCOM?
Yeah, I thought they filled all the positions.
They filled them?
How many do they have? I don't know how many they have.
Yeah, I don't want to guess, so we can...
So we'll put that out there, FINCOM needs two, land use committee needs one, open space committee needs three, planning board needs one, soil conservation committee needs one, superintendent of pest control, I didn't realize we had a superintendent of pest control, and TIF review board needs one. The Dayton Lions Club Food Bank, just so everybody realized, I'm a member of the Dayton Lions Club, so I hope you understand there's no conflict here. Food bank distribution will be held next at eight AM on Saturday, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, contrary to what the science says in the current town hall that says May fourteenth, it's May twenty-first, at the lower level of nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue. The rabies vaccination day, Saturday, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, from three to four PM at the Dayton Animal Shelter, eight twenty-one Tremont Street, twenty-dollar cash only, per immunization. For more information, call the Dayton Board of Health, seven seven four eight seven two zero nine four three. Bulky items, curbside pickup is scheduled for Monday, six six twenty-two through Friday, Monday, six six twenty-two through Friday, six ten twenty-two. Tags may be purchased at the Board of Health Office, eleven eleven Somerset Avenue. Contact the Board of Health to order your tags at seven seven four eight seven two zero nine four three. They are located in the basement of this building here. A separate tag is required for each item to be disposed of. Bulky item schedule is the same schedule as trash pickup, and items must be out though no later than seven o'clock. And those items, just so the public knows, for air conditioner is fifteen dollars, barbecue grill is ten, hot springs is fifteen, computer monitor is ten, computer tower is ten, desk slash cable is ten, dishwasher is fifteen, dryer is fifteen, DVD player is ten, file cabinet is ten, laptop is ten, love seat is ten, mattress is fifteen, microwave is ten, recliner is ten, refrigerator is fifteen, the doors must be removed on the refrigerator, sectional couch is twenty, sofa couch is fifteen, stove is ten, television is twenty, tire is five dollars, tire truck for a truck is ten dollars, tire for a tractor is fifteen dollars, washer is fifteen dollars, water heater is fifteen dollars, and VCR is ten dollars. So just so, you need to get those tags before the date that you want these items to be picked up, or days before, when they close, and I open on Fridays, make sure you have your tags on your items. I did have, in the past, I did have, put a TV out with a tag, and somebody tried to steal the tag. Didn't steal the TV, but tried to steal the tag. They weren't successful, because it sticks so well to the TV, but that happened. And I think that's it for announcements.
Mr. Pacheco, thank you very much. Town administrators report.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give an update along, I want to give an update along with the building commissioner about the town hall walkway. Like over the last four to five weeks or so, based on a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar Mass Office on Disability grant that the town had received at the end of the last, at the end of the last year, like we were able as a town, we were able as a town to replace the long, the longtime inaccessible ramp that was in front of town hall. And I'm prepping to do that, what we envisioned was a pathway similar to the pathway at Old Town Hall on O'Connell, that we want, that is also accessible, that is also accessible that we wanted to use as an example. uh, that is also accessible, that is also accessible that we wanted to use as an example. Uh, like, after everything happened and the construction was performed, uh, uh, you know, like I think all, oh, you know, like, I think, I think all of us in town became aware, uh, oh, 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 the need to have railings there. Uh, so, so over the last few weeks, so over the last week especially, we begun, we begun to process the plan and look into that. Oh, yeah, and if I, oh, yeah, and if I can have Jim update where we are on that, uh, 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 what we envision as a plan going forward, uh, we just wanted to share that with the public.
Mr. Agar. James Agar, Building Commissioner, hello, Dyson, hello, everyone. So yes, I again, kooko with Administrator Mullin. The intent was to create a walkway that did not require rails pursuant to state and federal regulations. We succeeded at that. However, the townspeople have spoken, they would like rails on the walkway, so we intend to move forward with designing rails. We actually have funding available for the engineering for the railing system. And then I'd like to bring that rail system before the Selectmen for discussion, and then we would subsequently put it out to bid. Obviously, we're going to need to find funding for the rails themselves, and that would have to be at probably a future town meeting. I don't think we have enough money in any of our budget lines to fund the rail system, but we can discuss that when the time comes. So to everyone at home who's voiced their concern, we are listening. We did engage the engineering firm. Unfortunately, or fortunately for him, he's away on vacation, so as soon as he returns, he's going to get with Administrator Mullin and I, and we'll start the process on designing the rails.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
So my understanding is because it's a walkway and not a ramp, the railing doesn't have to be as expensive if it was a ramp. There's certain turns and everything else you have to have for a ramp, but for a railing, for a walkway, it's a little different, so I don't think the expense is going to be as bad as it would have been if we kept the ramp or replaced the ramp with another ramp, so I appreciate the design that we have there.
Okay.
I understand people's concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
Yes, just to clarify, Jim, we have funding for the engineering, which is not the railing itself.
That is correct. We have funding for the engineering to design the railing system that would give us documents that we could then go out to bid with.
Okay.
We would just need to, yep, then we would subsequently have to find a funding source for the actual construction and installation.
I would like to add that this process of the walkway is one that first was developed with a budget mostly through grants, am I correct?
Yes, sir, you are.
And as a result, Mr. Agar, Mr. Gales, and the people who were involved in planning and carrying out the construction of this stayed within their budget, and they should be commended. Since it was completed, we have heard from many residents, many elderly residents who voiced concerns that they feel there is a need, and we're going to respond to those needs. And the voters in the town, it is your town, it is your money, it'll be your railway. And as a result, we will fulfill the wishes of, of the voters.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, all, all business, Budget Review. Mr. Mullin, Assessors Department?
Yes, I'm just going to pull up and share the budget. Uh, we just have a, we just have, we just have a few housekeeping matters as we work forward in the budget process, and I was hoping we'd be able to take care of this evening. Um, and, and as I mentioned, we're gonna, uh, next Wedn-, uh, next Wednesday, we're gonna come, we're gonna come back to a lot of, uh, we're gonna come back to a lot of other budget items, but as we go, it's just helpful to, um, um, address issues as, as they arise. But as, um, last week, as we discussed with FinCom in, in the Assessors Budget, um, sorry, in the, in the, uh, line item 5302, there is the need to increase, um, in 5302, the funding for the interim valuation, like, up to a total of $8,000. Uh, and currently, what the board has approved, um, based on earlier recommendations, is $4,000. Um, and, uh, and we discussed that with the FinCom last week, um, 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 and if the board would entertain increasing, um, that, uh, that $4,000 to $8,000, that, uh, that would be the question, the Assessors Budget at this point. Uh, there was a question also, like, in the same, at the same FinCom meeting, whether the total, the total $8,000, the total $8,000 in funding in line item 5303, uh, uh, would be needed, uh, like, and based on the updates in the law and the statute, um, um, in the lawsuit that was actually discussed, um, at, at the FinCom meeting, the, uh, the entire $8,000 is needed in that line. So, um, so the recommend, the recommendation before you tonight is, oh, is, is to increase, uh, to increase in line item 5302 to $4,000 to $8,000.
Thank you, and I, I also understand that the FinCom is.
Is receptive.
Is receptive.
Yes.
They haven't officially voted on it. Now, my understanding is that the valuation costs $8,000, but is it?
The interim valuation, yes.
But is, isn't it spread over two fiscal years?
One. I, I thought that when we.
It's put over two calendar years.
Calendar years.
Yes.
But it does not go into two fiscal years?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And this was discussed last night at the FinCom meeting, they were hoping that they'd be able to just do $4,000 this year, $4,000 next year.
Correct.
They weren't able to do that, so now they're seeking, Assessors Office is seeking the $8,000, FinCom appear to be receptive to it, and so am I, quite frankly.
Okay. No, I just wanted to clarify it, I mean, there were many people that weren't at FinCom meeting, and they will see this and it'd be nice to, to explain. Mrs. Gulat, yes?
I just want everyone to understand, we had gotten an $8,000 transfer from the reserve account to take care of the, the interim. And when we were looking at that, my question to the town accountant was, we're going to spend $4,000 in one calendar year, but we really need the rest of it for the next six months. And what we found out was, because it wasn't a budget item to begin with, and it's not a special article, you can't carry forward the other $4,000 from a transfer. So that's why the $4,000 that was budgeted, we thought we would have the four left over from the transfer, but that $4,000 will close out to free cash, so that'll take care of that. And as Mr. Mullin was talking about, the next line, um, in addition to the information I gave you about Verizon, we had the complete list come through, so National Grid, um, Spectra, which is Algonquin Gas Transmission, um, the, what was Columbia Gas, that's now ever sourced for the local gas pipelines in the street, um, New England Power, which I believe is the high tension lines that go through town, National Grid, who is the private supplier of electricity, that's just part of the list of utilities. We've got cable towers, uh, there's another Verizon in there, and we've got to appraise all of them this particular year. That's what that second line for $8,000 is, okay?
No, thank you.
All right.
I, I wanted to, to bring this up for clarification because I think there's confusion with many people, difference between calendar year and fiscal.
Yes.
And I hope by having this discussion, there'll be some clarity, because it'll be important when people go to vote at the, at the town meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to amend, um, the request or approval recommendation, Board of Selectmen recommendation to include $8,000 in account number 5302 for the interim valuation.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend that in account number 5302 in the Board of Assessors Budget, interim valuation be increased from $4,000 to $8,000 as a result of the explanation that we got last night and tonight.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second?
Well, I missed that explanation last night, and I apologize for that, but I have a second for this.
So, so in front of a member of the explanation last, so, so no, we discussed this at the, um, at the FinCom meeting on Thurs-, on, on Thursday, Selectman Karen, uh, where we would, uh, where we would need the full $8,000 to do the interim valuation because, um, the, the $8,000 that was transferred from the reserve fund, uh, wouldn't, uh, uh, wouldn't be able to be spent, uh, be, uh, beyond June 30th of, uh, which is the end of this fiscal year. So that, so yeah, so that leaves, uh, that leaves a balance of, that leaves a balance of $4,000, which we need to fund the work, uh, like for, um, uh, like, uh, for FY23, which is split over two calendar years, uh, $4,000 and $4,000.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that all we're talking about, it's just this one line then for the budget?
Well, yes, but we're going to need to make two motions. The first is to amend it, and then the second will be the numbers are going to change for the total approval, so I, I've separated them as two separate motions.
Move. Okay.
To amend the Board of Assessors Budget, uh, line item 5302, uh, to $8,000, um, do I, uh, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Now, based on the increase of $4,000, Mr. Mullin, the new number for account number 141 will be?
Uh, I just wanna.
$219?
Yeah, yeah, $219,000, $295.60.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Before you do that, um, did I just ask you why so much money is in overtime? When, I mean, why can't we jump up, jump up another $1,000 this year when we barely spent what we had last year, or this is going to be just, uh, $2,000 or $2,002?
Uh, Mr. Karen, I'll, I'll ask Mrs. Gulat to respond to that.
Sure.
Mr. Mullin, could you read that whole line, because I can't see it from here?
Yeah, I'll zoom in as well, I'm sorry.
It's overtime and something else?
Uh, overtime additional hours.
Additional hours.
Additional hours. Included in that is anticipated work that Carol Borogod will do to train Mrs. Schechter on forms that come in during the year that are like one-time forms, because Mrs. Borogod is the person who's experienced to do this. So she'll be training periodically, Mrs. Schechter, on how to handle these papers and get them filed properly. Whether or not the whole thousand is going to be needed, I really don't know. If it's not spent, it'll be closing out to free cash.
Now, I hate getting it back to free cash because that means you have to tax the people now, uh, just to have it come back to free cash. When you say the whole thousand, you're talking about overtime?
There could be overtime for employees, Mrs. Borogod would not get overtime pay.
Right, but that's what I'm asking about, $2,000 to overtime employees when they increased their $1,000 over last year, and they haven't even spent close to the $1,000 that they had budgeted this year.
Okay, but that, that's why I asked Mr. Mullin to read the line, it's not only overtime, it's also training. There's no way to anticipate whether or not there's a need for overtime for the two employees that are in the collective, covered by the collective bargaining agreement. In the case of the training, Mrs. Borogod will only be coming in to do training as is needed by Mrs. Schechter. At this point in time, we know that there are certain forms that come through sporadically during the year that only, at this point in time, only Mrs. Borogod has been trained to do them, simply because she was here for so long. I don't know what else may come down the pike from DOR. I have, although I've been on the Board of Assessors for over a year, all of that work is done internally, and when Mrs. Borogod was here, she just handled it. So my counterpart, when Mrs. Borogod was an elected member, neither one of us got involved with actually the day-to-day operation of the office and filling out reports and forms for DOR.
So, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, we're not voting tonight as a recommendation for this budget, correct? We're just voting to change the bottom line figure, and then once we hear from FinCom, we'll make our recommendation as to whether or not we're supporting the, the budget for the Assessors Office, is that correct?
That's, I mean, that, so, so that could be one way of proceeding, the, uh, uh, the Selectmen, um, at a, like, at a prime meeting made a recommendation, uh, to fund, to fund the Assessors Budget, like, uh, like, uh, at $215,000. And what, like, and what we were proposing tonight was to increase that recommendation by an additional four, um, but I mean, uh, but understanding the question that's out there, uh, you know, I mean, uh, you know, like, it wouldn't be, uh, you know, like, uh, uh, wouldn't be undoubted to win, um, uh, uh, like, to have a more full conversation with the FinCom about this either.
So that the public knows, the Board of Selectmen goes through all the budgets, they meet with the Department Heads, they make a recommendation.
Yes.
Then goes to FinCom, they make a recommendation, we participate in those meetings, we've had four or five meetings with FinCom, we're going to have one again next week, and then it comes back to us and we make our final recommendation based on the conversation that we have with FinComs. So I'm a little reluctant, at this time anyway, to make that recommendation that we support this budget. The public should know that this budget is, with the four, uh, thousand, additional $4,000, is $10,000 less than what it was, if I'm correct, the last year's budget. It's a reduction of $10,000, so it's not like we're spending extra money, but I do want to hear from FinCom as to what the recommendations.
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, in getting ready for the FinCom meeting last night, I had worked with Mrs. Schechter, and I emailed everything to Mr. Roach and asked him, do you want me there at the meeting? He said, no, I think I've got enough info. He said, we will support adding the $4,000 back to the line, knowing that the $4,000 that we can't spend will close out to free cash. He also said, however, you understand, this is not the final budget for the Board of Assessors, that when we get down to finalizing budgets, there may be cuts in your budget. And I said, yeah, I know how it works, you're going to go into town meeting with a balanced budget. So the only thing that, that was my understanding, and I think is what Mr. Mullin was saying, that it was only the $4,000 we were discussing, and FinCom added it in, but our budget is not finalized, and they'll do that at the next meeting and there could be cuts in it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Yes?
Are you recommending an amendment to this budget?
If I want, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Are you recommending an amendment to a line item in this budget?
Yes, I would like to see the overtime go from 2,000 to 1,000.
Before we accept or ask for a motion on this request, I would like to continue a discussion on it.
Okay.
Mr. Pacheco, do you have anything?
I just, I want to wait for, to see what FinCom says about the budget before I make a recommendation that we reduce the overtime budget.
Thank you.
So I'm not prepared to vote tonight.
I would like to comment before I do ask for a motion. Over a year ago, we paid, or we hired a principal assessor at $81,000 a year. That negotiated fee was based on the fact that we were told that the candidate had a vast amount of experience.
Would we be?
We had spent, excuse me.
I'm just asking that we be careful as to what we say.
We spent a whole year training. We're asking for $2,000 to continue that training. I have some concerns about that. At this point in time, Mr. Karen, do you have a motion to present before the Board? Mr. Karen?
No, I think we should table, I think we should table this.
I will, are you making that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I am. Motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
What do you want, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What just got tabled? The entire budget? The $4,000 we need for the valve or that line that's got training and overtime in it?
I believe what got tabled was a discussion in regards to the overtime and additional hours.
Okay, so that's 530, is it, Mr. Mullen, 5303?
That is 5131.
Excuse me?
5131.
5131. So.
Okay.
So the one before that, the 4,000, I'm confused with what just happened. Did you vote to approve the 4,000? So that line is eight, and it's only the, that line that's up in question?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I think the whole budget's up to question. We're gonna see what the FinCom says.
Right.
And what, the whole budget's up to question.
Okay, which, which I understand, because they make, they may make even more cuts.
That we may agree with, so.
But as the Board of Selectmen, right now, you're not gonna act on that 53, excuse me?
5131.
5131. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so, so then, so then if I could, Mr. Chairman, on the Fire, Highway and Sewer Department, I would recommend tabling to next week. We were anticipating having different types of information ready for those three budgets, but at this point, we need another week to finalize those recommend, those updated recommendations.
Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we table the budget review for the Fire, Highway and Sewer Department.
Motion. Mr. Karen, do I have a second?
Chairman.
Motion made in seconded.
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. I will, at this time, ask for a motion to suspend the order of the agenda to make a presentation to longtime member of the Board of Health and someone who's been a pillar of this community for a long time, Mr. Thomas Piers.
I shall move.
What do you want, please? You've tabled action on this until he got here. You've gotta take it off the table. You've gotta vote to take action right now. You just suspended some, but this is an agenda item.
Yes.
So you, you tabled, you delayed action, you skipped over it until he arrived. So now you've gotta bring it up.
Well, that's what, where, Mr. Pacheco just made a motion.
I'll make a motion that.
You said?
I'll make a motion that the scheduled appointment, Agenda Item Number Eight, Regarding Tom Piers, Retired Board of Health Chairman, Certificate of Recognition, be heard now. We'll discuss now.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
Do we share Mr. Piers come to the microphone?
Please?
Put their cell phone away, Mr. Piers.
Mrs. Katavia, would you like to also join him as the?
Yes, I'll let him speak and then I'll, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Piers?
Let me here.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
It is an honor to present this proclamation, a certificate of recognition for all of your years of service. Whereas Thomas Piers roots in the town of Dayton, go back many generations. He graduated from Dayton Rehoboth, Rehoboth High School. And after serving his country in the military, he came back to Dayton, where together with his wife Deborah, raised their two daughters, Bethany and Kristen. And whereas, Mr. Thomas Piers has dedicated over 44 years of public service to the town while working full-time for the United States Postal Service, and has a part-time real estate appraiser. And whereas, Mr. Thomas Piers volunteered countless hours to assist various boards and committees that include the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, 40B Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Stormwater Committee, and the Greater Attleboro Town and Home Consortium. And whereas, Mr. Thomas Piers led efforts together with fellow committee members to write the town of Dayton's first housing production plan. And whereas, Thomas Piers helped to establish the Board of Health as a standalone department after separation for the Board of Selectmen in 2017. And whereas, Mr. Thomas Piers, in his longstanding role of chairman of Board of Health, started many programs for the town to include the textile recycling, pink bag program, household hazardous waste days, and implementation of the code-red emergency notification system. And whereas, Mr. Thomas Piers created regulations for marijuana, bodyat, outside wood-burning boilers, bed and breakfast, lease laws, residential kitchens and stumps. And whereas, during his tenure as chairman of the Board of Health, Mr. Thomas led efforts to manage Dayton's response to global solid waste disposal challenges, while at the same time maintaining continued disposal services for town residents. And whereas, Mr. Thomas Piers' leadership has been instrumental in helping to guide the town of Dayton through the COVID-19 pandemic, as he and team prioritize the public health and safety of town residents and employees. Now, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Dayton, do hereby recognize Mr. Piers for his hard work and dedication to our community and residents. On behalf of our grateful community, we extend our sincere gratitude to Mr. Piers for his tireless efforts to move Dayton forward. It witness whereof we have hereunto set our hands and cause the great seal of the town of Dayton to be affixed on this 11th day of May, 2022. The Board of Selectmen of the town of Dayton let graciously present this honor.
Thank you.
That's beautiful.
We need one more signature.
It's okay. Thank you. Besides.
Nice to know you.
No. Mr. Piers, I know personally, I want to thank you for your mentorship, for your assistance in my short tenure on the Board of Selectmen. You're a wealth of knowledge. You have a great understanding and deep concern and care for the people of Dayton, and you exhibited it through over the 20 years that you served this town. Thank you.
Thanks. I was going to say, too, if you had told me, someone had told me back in 2006, I'd be standing here, after all these years, getting a certificate of recognition, recognition. I'd say, "You're crazy. I'm gonna do my three years on the Board of Selectmen and get out." But I ended up doing nine consecutive years, and, you know, it was one of the most rewarding experiences, I think, that, you know, I could have had. You know, I've always been about helping people or trying to support people. So it was a, I'll have to say to people out there is, the town has a lot of talent, and you can see that in the people, the residents. So I would encourage everyone to try to step up to the plate when they can and get involved in town matters, and you'll see how rewarding it can be. And I'm very glad to have done it. The fact I was born here, I guess, had something to do with that. I don't know. You know, not too many people here can say they were born, born in town. I don't think anybody here is old enough, maybe Bob would, but, or Nancy. Okay, so, you know, and I always felt that I owed the town of Dayton something, so that's what I did. I became involved, and one thing led to another, and, but finally, time comes when you know it's time to go, so. You know, but thank you very much. Thank everybody who supported me over the years.
Just want to add that I've supported that town over the years. Our daughters have been best buddies since they were in seventh grade, I believe, and they're still best buddies. We've had a Super Bowl game when the Patriots beat the Atlanta Falcons, to the dismay of your son-in-law.
Oh, yeah.
Who is, comes from Atlanta. I went to your granddaughter's first birthday party when she called me grandpa all night and sat in my lap. Because they, they found some resemblance, I guess. But we've been friends for a long time. I've always supported you. I've liked your positions that you've done, the senior abatement that we have as a result of Tom Piers and his support for that. He's done a lot of work for the town. We're gonna miss him. I think we're gonna see him somewhat in the future again, but he definitely needs a break. But he, you've been on so many different committees. We've shared some of those committees. But you've been so active in town. I think the town is gonna miss you, your experience, your knowledge.
I'm just waiting for the solid waste committee.
That's your latest Agenda item.
There's definitely a need.
Yes. But you've been a great asset to the town.
No matter where I'm at, I'll always be available to anybody, you know, that may need help in any position in the town, if I can help. So that's where I'm at, and I'll always be here if somebody needs help with anything, so.
And over the years, in the Board of Selectmen, I'm sure you've given many of these recognitions, proclamations out, but for you to receive it, it should really be an honor, because it doesn't happen to everybody or everybody. So I appreciate the work you've done for this town.
No, thank you. Thank you, Selectman Hull. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Mr. Piers. He'll get the final signature, and Mr. Mullen will present this to you.
You're gonna frame that, right?
Yes.
If it's in the budget.
So just one other.
Gonna stick a hundred underneath there.
So just one other thing. We did, we did actually have a comment in the Facebook, oh my God, not the Facebook chat, I'm sorry, the Zoom chat, that I actually think, and I think the person who, who wrote the comment is now logging back on. But there is an iPhone user, and I, and I just want to give that person the ability to say what she said in the chat.
Good evening.
You just have to unmute yourself, Kristen.
Kristen?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yes.
All right, I wanted to be there but couldn't. I don't, did you read the chat? I got disconnected.
No, no, I haven't read the chat. I haven't read it. Like, I actually felt it would be better coming from you directly, Kristen.
Okay, perfect. All right. Hi, Dad.
I get, oh, I, uh.
I just wanted to say congratulations. We're all very proud of you. I don't know how, listening to him list all those things off, I can't even say I knew all you did, so, you know.
He missed a couple, but I didn't want to tell him.
He's fact-checking.
Oh, my phone is acting up, and we love you very much, and, you know. I kind of follow in your footsteps a little bit, but I don't know. We'll see how that goes. But anyways, I just wanted to say we love you. We're very proud of you, and congratulations.
Thanks. I forgot to mention, if it wasn't for family, that I wouldn't have done what I was able to do, family support. And especially your mother and you guys, you've always supported me no matter what I did, so, you know. It was helpful. So, all right, you know.
Well deserved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Mr. Karen? Do you have, do you have anything you wish to add? Recognition of Mr. Piers.
Katavia speak.
I know, I think it's a fabulous gentleman, and I've known you nothing but to be a gentleman. And I couldn't ask for a better person than, than was so deserved to.
Thank you.
How's that?
Ms. Katavia, as chairman of the Board of Health.
Yes, I, I'm the newbie, but I am the chairman. My name is Barbara Katavia. I've been a resident of Dayton for over 50 years. And I met Tommy Piers about 50 years ago because he was a childhood friend of my husband and neighbor, and I can only. And I can only imagine what those two got into. But, so when Tom asked if I would be interested in applying for Board of Health, I was really surprised. But he said, "With my construction, septic installs experience and having a food trailer, he thought I'd be a good fit." He also told me it'd be just about three hours a month at the meeting. Oh, I'm glad you guys are laughing. So my first meeting, I went, and I said, "Well, which seat should I sit in?" And I said, "Well, I guess I'll take that one over there." And someone said, "Oh, no, you may as well go in the front here, in the center, because Tommy's retiring." And I said, "What?" They said, "Yeah." And I said, "Boy, you guys, you gave me a life jacket, and now you're throwing me off the boat." And that's basically what happened, but Tommy was always there to help me and gave me pointers. And I learned that the Board of Health is so much more than just health. It takes care of the transfer station. During COVID, our health inspector, Todd Pilling, and our office administrator, Rosengrasi, worked for weeks on end, no days off. They were downstairs, working, putting the work in, taking care of Dayton. And Tommy was, wasn't here all the time, but 24/7, he was available. And I mean 24/7. There were long nights and long days. And I, I couldn't believe it. I didn't know about that. I thought everybody in the town went home and did their work from home, but not the Board of Health. They were required, and it was their job, their commitment, and they filled it amazingly. They also do housing problems, which concerns. They also do housing problems, which concerns health problems, animal control, and of course, now we have the stormwater, which is amazing in itself, but it's a big job. It's a great job. And Tommy was right there, and so were our inspector and our administrator. They worked crazy hours. It's amazing. I've learned that because last week I put in over 20 hours, just sitting there, doing work, and it wasn't, we weren't chatting on the phone, we were doing solid, solid work that has to be done. Tommy, I can't imagine how you did it for so many years. I'm not worn out yet, but I'm getting there. And the Board of Health in this town, you're just indispensable.
Well.
And we will be bugging you.
Everybody is.
No, but we will be bugging you, sweetheart. We will.
We, I think it's, we're about, I think I survived, and there's people on the phone, and we have our latest, our latest number, as everyone knows, that she was appointed as a RAN registration.
Yep. Fantastic girl.
And that's going to be a tremendous help, I think, to the board, so.
Could you please come up here? Come here. Come here. My turn, throwing you off the boat.
What are you doing?
From the Board of Health and the townspeople.
You guys already gave me something.
Love you. No, we can never give you enough, and the town should be forever grateful to you, and I'm not, I'm not even kidding about that. He's an amazing guy.
Thank you.
And you're always welcome, you know that.
Thank you. Mr. Pilling, do you care to speak? Thank you.
Thank you. Health agent Todd Pilling, yes, Tom has been invaluable to the Board of Health for the four and a half years since we've been in existence. And yes, I've given him a fair amount of stress through that four and a half years, as we've dealt with growing pains and changes in course and all the new programs and everything. And yes, he's been there right beside us, pushing for us, arguing for us, and just helping us get through it all, because a lot of the waters, we couldn't navigate without him. And I don't know where the Board of Health would be right now without him, and I'm looking forward to seeing where we go, but I know at any time, we can ever call him and get his help as we go forward. And I'm going to miss him, and thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Pilling. Ms. Mellow, as the health age, I'm sorry, the town nurse, do you have anything that you would like to add?
She's also a Board of Health member.
And now a Board of Health Commissioner, yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't be there tonight, and I actually thought I missed this moment, so somehow I logged in right at the right time. You're definitely going to be missed. I wish that we had more time to work together. I can't even begin to tell you how grateful I am for the opportunity you gave me to be the town nurse. It means more to me than I think you'll ever know. And I know you're not going to go far, because you're going to be on Solid Waste Committee, and that's going to be great, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gulat, I know you served with Mr. Piers for many years.
Oh, no. You're in for it now.
Now I'm going to say stuff to embarrass Tom. I was on the Finance Committee for a number of years. In 2006, it was publicly announced that we had federal and state funding to replace the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge after over 50 years of saying, you got it, and somebody pulling the money. I was on the Finance Committee, as I said. I went to the then-Board of Selectmen, Richard Hegeman.
Tom Piers.
And Frank Costa. And went to a meeting, and they asked if I wished to speak, and I said, I'm here to ask you to appoint me liaison to the Board of Selectmen for the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge project. And they said, what does that mean? And I said, I want to work for the town to represent you, to do everything that needs to be done to get that bridge built. I won't spend any money, I won't make any major decisions, I will bring everything to you, but I will make sure all the meanings we need and all the paperwork we need will get done. And that was my first appointment from the Board of Selectmen, and shortly after that, the town was fined by the EPA for not following its notice of intent. In April of 2007, I was elected, so I joined the Board. Mr. Costa did not run, and he supported me. At that point in time, it was Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and I really got to work with Tom Piers. And it was, I mean, I know a lot about municipal finance. I had no idea about the actual governance of the town relative to Selectmen and Boards of Health. And it was Mr. Piers who would usually call me at any hour of the day or night and tell me, we had a call, we had an inspection, there was a problem. There was, remember the bonfire on Main Street, when we got there, the fire department responded? It was a smoldering thing, and it hadn't burst into a flame, you know, wet hay and all of that. But when we got there, we found situations with calf and some other animals that we had to take action on. But whenever Tom called, I knew we had to go. And also, that was the first year that when we organized the Board, Mr. Hegeman was Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and Mr. Piers was Chairman of the Board of Health. And I said, okay, I'm clerk of both boards, but let's divvy up the work. If Richard does Selectmen and Tom does Board of Health, I will do the backup that goes with them both, but I want to keep the appointment for the bridge, and also, I'm going to take on stormwater, because if we don't get this done, we're going to get fined again. And I remember them saying to me, do you know anything about stormwater? And I said, no, but I'm going to learn. The first MS4, he signed as Chairman of the Board of Health, I believe. But that's just one example of all of the things that Tom and I have worked on over the years. I have learned so much from Tom. He's been supportive of things that have come up that the town needed to do. He had the knowledge, he had the experience. When we, when I came back and the EPA had added so much more to the stormwater program, and we formed the committee, couldn't have had a better person to be on that committee. And I certainly thank the Board of Selectmen for appointing him and all the members of that committee. But just the background and experience he had was, you can't put a dollar value on it. So I just want to publicly say, thanks, Tom. It's been a good ride.
I thought it was over there, I'd be laying on you.
I guess, we were a team. We were together. I'm not going to get emotional, but when he says to you, he'll be around, and if anybody needs him, I'll tell you a story. One day, my husband was out in the back chopping wood, comes in the house all upset, he can't find his ring. And he's, I've looked everywhere, and I can't find my ring. He's, and I said, what were you doing? Out in the woods, the back of our yard, one part is, it's not lawn, it's kind of wild, you know? I said, I know who to call, because Tom has a metal detector. And he came to the house, and he found the ring. So.
I remember that.
Thank you. John certainly appreciated it, and he never lost it again, Tom. So I just want to, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you publicly, and I agree with everything that's been said here tonight. Thanks, Tom.
And I'm not sure everybody knows, but Tom got the most votes as Selectmen of anybody in town in any election that we've ever had, the first time you ran. You look at me like that, but 2006, got the most votes. I told him, that's the highest number of votes you'll ever get, because it's downhill from there, but you got elected two more times.
It was the biggest turnout, and it was, if you remember, it was very cold.
It was, did we have the elections maybe in February at that time? You've had a change, you've had a change, but it was very, I mean, it was cold, cold. But he got the most votes of any Selectman's.
That's why I said earlier, it's important for people to get out and vote.
Loved by the town.
So, yeah, it's, even back then, the total among, I think it was 1,600 turnout.
Wow.
And as far as I know, it's never been that high since. But it's so important to get out there, because these elected officials are going to work for you, so staying home doesn't get people elected that you want in office. So, very good.
Thank you. Mr. Siffion, you had your hand raised earlier, was that in regards to Mr. Piers? Joe Siffion?
Joe's iPhone.
Siphon?
Joe's iPhone.
Joe's iPhone, I'm sorry. Nicole Mellow. Mr. Karen? Hello? I was just wondering if you had anything further, or we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
No, we didn't go on to the next item.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe I'll need a motion to return to the regular order of business.
I'll make a motion that we return to Selectmen's reports. Agenda item number 12.
Mr. Karen, have a second?
I already paid a group call.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hall is an aye. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, I just want to give a brief report on the Dyton Trails Committee feasibility study. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Horstley-Witten Group, who's doing the feasibility study for the trails, the two-mile trails from back of Alice's Restaurant to Sandpiper Way.
Yes.
They had a meeting earlier, but they failed to invite the Parkson Recreation, as well as the Commission on Disability, so we had a separate meeting with them, and Kevin Smith, Nicole Mellow attended, Sue Cody from Parkson Rec, and Jonathan Gales and myself. We met with Gerald Adler, who is the Director of Trails in Greenway for the DCR Department of Recreation and Conservation.
Department of Conservation and Recreation.
And we also met with the Principal Planner, Nate Kelly, who works for Horstley-Witten Group, and Jennifer. And we discussed with them our concerns about the trail and how it would impact people with disability, and we had a very healthy conversation. We talked about signage, perhaps some of the signage being embraced, some of the signage being able to assist people who are autistic, so that they can kind of get an idea as to what the, that's going to be in front of them when they go to, on the trails. We talked about the different parking areas and how they're going to have to be accessible. We talked about some areas that are historic on the trails, that we want to make sure that it's accessible, and they seem to be willing to include that in their feasibility study for the, for the trails. We're also going to have at some point, I asked that we have a, we actually walk the trails, so we can identify certain things that we think need to be fixed or corrected and be ADA compliant, and they, like I said, they were receptive, so I thought we had a very good meeting. It wasn't that we neglected anybody else, but the stakeholders was the Parkson Recreation, it was the Commission on Disability, and they weren't called to the first meeting, so we were able to have a separate meeting and were able to present our concerns. So it was a good meeting, and I'm looking forward to the feasibility study coming out. There are little ways from completing it, but it's nice to see that the Town, Parkson Recreation, and Commission on Disability is going to be representative and have an input on it, so.
Thank you, and thank you for helping to coordinate that. I do have something, but, Mr. Karen, do you have anything regarding Selectmen's report?
I don't, sir.
Okay. At the last Park and Recreation Commission meeting, Kevin Smith was appointed Chairman, Susan Cody Vice Chair, and recently elected member Rachel Gulat as clerk. The Commission also unanimously appointed Kevin Smith to be their representative on the Community Preservation Committee. I was advised that this position does not need Board of Selectmen approval, since Park and Recreation is an elected board. Thank you. Correspondence to the Dyton Board of Selectmen from Annabella Powell, Executive Director, Dyton Council on Aging. We are pleased to inform you that the Dyton Council on Aging has received a check in the amount of $112 from the Tauntonhausen Authority Resident Services Coordinator Grant for the purchase of 28 fitness class passes for Lincoln Village Housing for the elderly residents. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town accountant and deposited in the Council on Aging gift account. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to call. Ms. Powell, congratulations and thank you. I'm not sure if you have anything you would like to add in regards to this award?
No, not today. No?
Okay, thank you.
I think the line today, I didn't really want to talk, I just wanted the line. It worries a lot, though. So, but no, that was a local thing that they did for the residents of Lincoln Village.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen, in regards to this, what is the process to access money from the gift account? I understand Parkson Rec also has a gift account as well.
So, yes, so the, so the Council on Aging is able to access and expend from the gift account, if the gift is accepted, the gift of $112 is accepted by the Board, Mr. Chairman, so I would recommend that the Board vote to accept the gift from the Taunton Housing Authority Resident Services, so then the Council on Aging would be able to, they would be able to expend that amount of, expend that amount of funding from the gift account.
Thank you, Ms. Mellow. We'll entertain a motion to accept the gift from the Taunton Housing Authority for $112.
I'll make a motion that we accept the gift of $112 from the Town Housing Authority Resident Service Coordinator Grant to be deposited in the Council on Aging gift account.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second? Mr. Karen? Hello? Motion has been made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye.
Just so the public knows, there is a time delay. Although it's eight o'clock here, it's probably two o'clock in the morning over there, so just so people know. Appreciate, Mr. Karen, participating.
To the Dyton Board of Selectmen, from Sheila D. New, Assistant Program Manager, Dyton Council on Aging, Primetime Supportive Day Program. We are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a donation in the amount of $30. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town accountant and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donation Account. At this time, I will accept a...
I'll make a motion that we accept the $30 donation that was given to Primetime, that we turn over that money to the town accountant and deposit in the Primetime Gift and Donation Account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you. Approval of the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of April 27, 2022.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the regular meeting minutes of April 27, 2022.
Do I have a second? Mr. Karen? Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Approval of the warrants.
Make a motion that we approve the warrants dated May 4, 2022, 44A-22, $107,427, and 44B-22-22, $689, $689,073.44.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants for May 11, 2022. 45A-22, $110,653.60 in 45B-22, $180,960.92.
Mr. Karen? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Thank you. Public input? Yes.
Last Friday, we were honored to be invited to the ribbon cutting at the Aggie School. And I didn't stay for the tours because I had other plans. And then there was an open house on Saturday. A number of people have told me about a, I'll call it, a village that was designed by the Natural Resources students. And it had everything you can think of, including a stormwater system and drainage system. And somebody said there was a park that looked like winter with road salt. So I was speaking to the superintendent to find out what they were going to do with it. And I just want the public to know, that is a permanent exhibit. And if people wish to see it, they can call and, you know, arrange a visit. But I believe that Conservation Chairman Bill Frenette's grandson is one of the students in that program who helped create this. So I intend to go see it because I did miss it. But the feedback was very good and I just wanted the public to know. If you didn't see it, I understand it's worth seeing and it will be a permanent exhibit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, I had the wonderful opportunity of attending the tour and the presentation, the award ceremony, ribbon cutting on Friday and visited on Saturday as well. What a gem for the town of Dyton. Academically, that school has received recognition for programs that are nation first-class leaders. They have a lab for climbing for students. It can be done very safely. One of the best in the nation. They have a robotic dairy barn that is one of the top in the nation. They have an actual museum with live animals that is something people must see. It's just incredible for a high school to have a museum. A museum that I might add that is run by the students, that the tours are conducted by the students. They have, and I don't know if many people are aware, they have doggy daycare. They have doggy grooming that is open to the public. We are very fortunate to have a facility that our students can attend that is one of the best in the nation. I might also add a project that was frugally done, very nicely done and done at a cost that the taxpayers in the town of Dyton can handle. And we all appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else for public input? At this point, I will entertain a motion to enter an executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid requirements. We'll also enter into executive session to approve the Board of Health executive session meeting minutes of September 9, 2021. Approval of the Board of Health executive session meeting minutes of October 4, 2021. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting minutes of April 13, 2022. An approval of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting minutes of April 27, 2022.
I so move.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. We will not be returning to regular session. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.